I will now call the February 18th, 2014 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great body for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome those in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on cable TV 7, to tonight's city council meeting. The next item is the consent agenda. Councilman Edmondson asked that we pull item E. There are other items that need to be pulled. If not, I accept the motion to approve everything except item E.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levsey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Next, we have the item pull of Councilman Edmondson, adopting a resolution 20-2014. Councilman Edmondson.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. My question is that this is in agreement with Siemens as far as fire safety checks for City Hall, Public Safety Building, and CYOU. And the question would be is, it looks like it's a three-year contract, and maybe I'm not right in that, but I believe that's what it was stated in there. With the intimate construction with the Public Safety Building and the removal of the CYOU building, are we spending money on something, or is this already in the contract, taken into consideration? I just didn't get enough information out of it to be able to make that call.
We're required to inspect those quarterly, so while the buildings are still in operation right now, we're still required. They'll be going down, basically, at the end of March. We have to do an inspection in March on those systems. Once they're taken out, then we won't be inspecting those systems. I know it seems kind of redundant, but we're required to, as seen, is to keep them under warranty in operational mode. So, once those buildings are taken out of service and the systems aren't being used, we will not be servicing those at that time, but then when they come back on, we'll have to, again, test those fire suppression systems. So it is a three-year contract, simply because they're the service that does all the contracts within the city. And so those buildings are currently being operated, they're included in that contract, but once they start construction on the projects, we won't be inspecting those systems.
Okay. Does this cover when the new building goes out?
It will.
Is this going to cover the new building, or are we going to come back and look at this again? Again, it's just some questions I had that...
It would allow us to cover the fire suppression system that will be constructed under the new building, as long as it's the same system as a Siemens system. If it becomes a different company, which the old building will still have the Siemens fire suppression system, and I would assume that they're matching that. I don't know what the contract detail says on the construction side of it, but I would assume they're matching that same fire suppression system across in the new wing. So it would cover that, once that comes back on.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Dovell? Not accepted motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All in both same sign, motion carries. Now, we're going to move to a presentation on our annual audit report. We have Kevin Smith and Kristen Hughes from McLaughery, but also, before I do that, I want to thank Karen Van Winkle and her staff. And Karen, I understand you've been with us 24 years, a long time, and we appreciate your longevity. Allison Hamilton, wave your hand, Allison. Allison's been with us 10 years. And we have some newbies here. Kimberly Tittle, we have Mary Townsend, Melissa Braun, and now with us is Rebecca Smith. So we want to thank you, and before they speak, Christine, would you like to make any comments as Assistant City Administrator over that department, over that organization?
Yes, I would just like to echo your thanks to all of the staff who works very hard to get prepared for the audit, and that also extends to the rest of the city departments, too, that we rely on to get a lot of information from timely in order to be prepared when the auditors come on site.
Thank you. Now, we'll kick it to you, Mr. Smith and Ms. Hughes, for an exciting audit report.
Thank you. I hope you're going to love that. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um... There you go. Is that better? Good evening. We have a brief presentation to go through the results of the 2013 year-end audit. The city is required by state statute every year to have a financial statement audit performed. It also includes an audit of the federal programs of the city. And so we've got a brief presentation, the first few slides Kristen's going to talk through, the results of the audit and the results of the compliance report, the compliance over the federal grant programs. And we've got a few slides that have some financial information, just at a very high level for the city, that you should have received the comprehensive annual financial report, referred to as the CAFR. This is about 110 or so pages of financial statements of the city. And then there's also a compliance report that you have here separately, the compliance report. And then there's also a letter that titled "Report to the Honorable Mayor and City Council." Kristen's going to go through the results of this letter and talk about the compliance report, and then we'll go through a few financial slides as well.
Good evening. Starting off with the auditor responsibilities, as Kevin noted, the first item we're going to go through is the stapled packet, the report to the Honorable Mayor. So I'll summarize the information that you'll find included in there. So first, you'll see noted, basically, what our responsibilities are, the guidance that we follow. As Kevin mentioned, he's going to go through financial information, but what you will see in the CAFR is that we did issue what's referred to as an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest level of an opinion that we can give on your financials. And, as mentioned, a lot of that goes to the staff you have and the hard work they put in compiling that information for us. So, in this document, you'll also see summarized, if there's any accounting standards that the city adopted in the current year, there you'll find a summary of what that was and what the impact was on the financials. So in the current year, the city did adopt what's referred to as GASB statement numbers 63 and 65. 63 really changes in the equity section of your proprietary, your enterprise funds, and then your full accrual. They were previously referred to as net assets, and they're referred to as net position now. So for the most part, it's just kind of a classification or a terminology change. With the adoption of GASB 65, though, you'll see in footnote 12, it does summarize the impact in the financials. In summary, there was a restatement. With the adoption of this standard, bond issuance costs, when you issue debt, any costs that you incur when you're issuing that debt previously were capitalized as an asset and amortized over the life of the debt, and now they're just expensed in the year that the debt is issued. So, you'll see in that footnote, it just talks about beginning net position was restated to write those off, since they're no longer reported as an asset. Also in the document, you'll see, we go through and we summarize any areas that are considered management's judgments or estimates. The main takeaway there is that we go through and we're making sure that the process management is using appears reasonable, since there is a component of subjectivity there. Also in the document, you'll see a couple audit adjustments noted during the audit, really no material items, certainly nothing that we then had to evaluate as a significant deficiency or material weakness, as far as management preparing the financials, but you will see a couple of those noted in there. But again, no material items. We'll also summarize if there's any uncorrected or immaterial misstatements. Really, it's areas that we looked at with management, an adjustment could have been booked, but we both agreed they were immaterial to the financial statements, but they're summarized there for your review. The document will also go through, if there was any disagreements with management, those would be discussed with you. You'll see noted there were none. This is a really good group to work with as we're going through our audit procedures. Future accounting pronouncements, you'll see those discussed in a footnote to the CAFR as well, if there's any accounting pronouncements coming up that are expected to have an impact on the financials. The one pertaining to the city in a couple of years is GASB 68, which relates to pension standards and recording unfunded liability related to the loggers program that the city participates in. So there's a disclosure in the footnotes to the financials, that that financial, that standard will have an impact in a couple of years on the financials. And lastly, in the document, any other written communications between ourselves and management are included in there. Really, it's just the management representation letter you'll see attached, several pages going through, and management just confirming to us that the information we received and discussions we had were accurate to the best of their knowledge. The other bound document that Kevin pointed out was the compliance report. This is a summary primarily of our work over the grants, but also on the financial statement side, if there was any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses noted as they relate to internal controls of the financial statements, you would see that noted there, there were none. So you'll see in our two-page opinion there, confirming that there was no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses noted in that area. For the single audit, we had one major program this year, it's the city's Clean Water State Revolving Fund. In picking that program, you'll see we had, if we compared to the city's total expenditures for the year by looking at that grant, we had approximately tested about 85 percent of the total federal grant expenditures with that program. There were a couple instances of non-compliance noted. As it relates to the Clean Water Grant, I think you're already familiar with this, this was actually, the OIG came in this year with the city and took a look at a purchase that had actually been made in a previous year, I believe it was 2010 or '11, the first year of the grant. And it was just noted that there were certain procurement requirements that had not been followed. So, you know, I think the main item there is that this was a purchase made a couple of years ago, it was a result of their review. As part of our audit procedures, we do go through and take a look at any reviews that were done by any granting agencies and consider those in our audit work as well, but this was a purchase from a couple of years ago. And in talking to the city, they, you know, made changes in their control procedures to make sure if a change order like this with a contractor came through, they have procedures in place to address that. And then the second item, the CDBG grant, this one actually wasn't a major program that we went through this year, but again, with the procedures, I mean, going through the results of any federal granting reviews, it was noted, they had results that the city was not spending their expenditures in a timely manner, they have an expectation or requirements on what the unexpendable balance was going to be. So we did note that as an instance of non-compliance as well, which I think you guys have gone through as a result of their review as well. Next, I think Kevin's going to take you through a summary, as he mentioned, of the financial results, unless you have any questions on the first two documents that I went through.
Any questions? Proceed.
All right. The next couple slides, I'm just focused on the city's general fund, which is, as you know, the main operating fund, that's what a lot of readers focus their time and energy on. And so these next few slides just highlight the revenue and the expenditures of the general fund and give you a six-year history. So this slide here shows the revenue by type for your general fund. As you can see, the red line there is the line that represents taxes. And so the largest portion of the city's general fund is funded with tax money, that includes sales tax, property tax, franchise taxes. Overall, revenue for the general fund in 2013 increased about $780,000, which is about a 3% increase. The majority of that increase came in the tax line. Everything else, there were some slight increases and decreases when you look at some of those other fees that are received as revenue in the general fund, but the bulk of that is the tax revenue. And then when you look at the flip side, you look at the expenditures for the general fund, you can see the different functions that, of the expenditures that are reported within the general fund. The most significant being public safety, so the green line there accounts for about half of the general fund's expenditures each year. Overall, expenditures increased about $400,000 over last year, which is just about a 1.5% increase over last year. So most of the categories and the functions that you see from 2012 to 2013 remain pretty flat and did not increase all that significantly. And the expenditures did come in under budget. This next slide shows the fund balance by category for the general fund. In 2013, the city's general fund ended with a fund balance of $17.3 million, and that's compared to about $15.5 million last year in 2012, so about a $1.9 million increase. And the different colors within the bar graph show the different restrictions that appear within the general fund's fund balance. The most significant restrictions are those from the yellow category and above, those committed amounts and restricted amounts. The committed amounts are commitments that are made by city council. So those cannot, the purpose of those funds can't be changed unless the city council approves a formal resolution to change the use of those funds. And the red section are those funds that are restricted by an outside party, so you have no say in how those funds are spent, those are usually restricted by another party, usually through debt agreements. Everything from the purple section and below, the assigned fund balance and the unassigned fund balance, those are components of your fund balance that you have a little bit more control over. Those assignments are reserves, basically, that management can make to earmark funds for certain purposes. When you look at the, if you look at the CAFR, you can look at page 20 to get a good summary of what makes up those components, see what those restrictions are for and what those commitments and assignments are for. And then this chart here just shows the legal debt margin of the city. As you're probably well aware, there's, the legal debt margin of the city is $105 million, which is well under the allowable limit by state statute. The assessed value of the property, if you take 20 percent of the assessed value, that's your legal debt limit. And so that's what that yellow bar there represents, and the green bar down below represents the amount of outstanding debt that the city does have. So there's about $40 million of general obligation debt, and, which is well under the, around $200,000, $200 million legal debt limit. And then the last slide here just shows the results of the enterprise funds for the city, so this would be the water sewer and the golf funds. You'll see a slight decrease in operating revenue for those three funds compared to 2012, with operating expenses remaining relatively consistent. All of the funds do have positive net income if you exclude depreciation expense. A lot of times, that's taken out of the equation because it is a non-cash item. So they all are operating positively, overall net income if you take out that expenditure. But there are certain transfers that are still being made to those funds if you look at those financial statements within the CAFR, and some are operating negatively when you look at the cash flows from operations. So those are the only slides I have on the financial statements. If you look in the back of the CAFR on page, I believe, beginning on page 89, 87, is the statistical section, and that's a great place to go to, to see a 10-year history of a lot of the financial information that's reported within the CAFR, and it gives different statistics of certain city departments and things like that. So it's a great place to go to, to get that summary. And also, at the very beginning of the CAFR, there's management's discussion and analysis, which is a narrative that management prepares to give their thoughts on significant, you know, increases or decreases of financial activity that occurred throughout the year. You'll also see within the CAFR a certificate of achievement that the city receives each year. It's an award program that the GFOA puts on, that the city has to submit their financial report and that is graded by, you know, independent reviewers, and that award's given to entities that achieve this, all of the requirements that are out there for that program. And so the city has received that award again this year, for the 2012 CAFR, and will be submitting the 2013 CAFR, and I would expect you to see that award again for the 2013 report. Again, as everybody's mentioned, you know, we received full cooperation from everyone when we were out here performing the audit, no significant difficulties, full cooperation from Christine and Karen and everybody, and all the departments that we worked with in testing the grant programs and things like that. So we do want to thank you for that, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions with Mr. Smith and Ms. Hughes from the council?
Your Honor, I don't have a question. I would just like to say, having been on the side of the fence that's preparing for audits, I think our staff does a fantastic job, and it's wonderful to hear that they are performing all the necessary due diligence and such to make this a successful audit. So I want to extend my thanks also.
Any other comments? If not, thank you so much for, excuse me, thank you so much for coming and presenting that. And Ms. Kate, we have, probably for the last 40 years, got that, was it, GFOA award, so we should be on track for getting that again, shouldn't we? Yeah. So anyway, thank you so much for coming and making that presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing on the vacation of Price Chopper North. Mr. Johnson.
Your Honor, for a public hearing, VAC-1-14-4280, I'd like to offer an exhibit which includes city council information form with attachment, staff report with attachments, location map, map of proposed area of the vacation, affidavit publication as advertised and examiner, January 25, 2014, vacation application with applicant's explanation of the request, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to property owners notifying them of the public hearing, and these are all the exhibits I have to offer on behalf of this hearing.
Ms. Allen, on behalf of the city?
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. Give me for you CDAs a request to vacate two easements located at the Price Chopper North property, North 7th Highway, one being a detention base and easement, the other being a storm sewer easement. Here's a site location map identifying exactly the detention base on the west side of the property, and then you can see the jagged line there being the storm sewer easement. So those are the two pieces being requested to be vacated before you this evening. The purpose for the vacation is to accommodate the proposed expansion of Price Chopper, primarily to north and east, but also to accommodate some additional modified truck movement to the west of the building. So with that, the applicant is before you this evening to request vacating those easements. They will then provide new easements for the same purposes as a part of their final plat process, and that's really the only remaining piece after this, is to go through the final plat process for conducting their expansion of that and remodeling of the facility. So you will still see this coming for you at least one more time through the final plating process. The plan cushion did hear this request at their meeting last week, and they have recommended approval on a vote of 10 to 0. So I'll certainly stand for your questions.
Are there any questions, Ms. Allen? Are there any comments for the record? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Is the applicant present?
Ladies and gentlemen, Your Honor, my name's Arnie Tullock. I'm with Schaefer, Clinton, and Warren. I'm here on behalf of Cosentino Enterprises, the owner of the supermarket and the one that's planning the remodel.
Swear again, there's...
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, too soon. I did. Sorry.
That's okay.
Anyway, we're here to request the vacation of the easements, enable us to move forward with the plating process. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the council? Matt, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? Speak in support of. In opposition to? Opposition to? We'll close this public hearing. Next, we have introduction reading of Bill 4301, approving the vacation.
I'll introduce it. First reading of Bill number 43001, an ordinance vacating an existing storm sewer easement and existing detention base and easement located generally at the Price Chopper North in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri. Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All in both same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 4301, an ordinance vacating an existing storm sewer easement and existing detention base and easement located generally at Price Chopper North in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levsey?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4476.
Next is item 7, which has been pulled by staff because the applicant did not get everything in that was supposed to be given to them. So that is pulled by staff.
And will likely be on the next agenda.
Will likely be on the next agenda if they get everything in that they're supposed to get in. I don't want to qualify that. Next, item 8, introduction reading of Bill 4303.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill number 4303, an ordinance approving final plat for Lot 2, Blue Springs Commercial Center, City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri. Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All in both same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 4303, an ordinance approving final plat for Lot 2, Blue Springs Commercial Center, City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levsey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4477.
Next, we have introduction reading of Bill 4304.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill number 4304, an ordinance approving final plat for Thompson Business Park, first plat, City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri. Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All in both same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 4304, an ordinance approving the final plat for Thompson Business Park, first plat, City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levsey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4478.
Next, we have introduction reading of Bill 4305.
I'll introduce it again, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill number 4305, an ordinance adding Section 340350 to the code of ordinances of the City of Blue Springs to regulate texting messaging, text messaging while operating a motor vehicle within the City of Blue Springs pursuant to state law. Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All in both same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 4305, an ordinance adding Section 340350 to the code of ordinances of the City of Blue Springs to regulate text messaging while operating a motor vehicle within the City of Blue Springs pursuant to state law.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levsey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4479.
That brings us to mayoral announcements. First, the mayor of state of the city addresses this Thursday at the Blue, presented by the Blue Springs Chamber of Commerce at their monthly luncheon at Adams Point Conference Center. I believe they start serving food about 11:30, so, or 11:15 for those who want to get a jump start.
You anticipate long. Speak.
I want them to have a full stomach so they can take everything in that I say during that state of the city address. And if anybody wants to stand up, like to do with the president and applaud as I'm making it, that's welcome. And next, we have the Blue Springs Police Academy and Lunas Association have a Texas Hold'em Poker Tournament at Lunar Bowl this Saturday night, beginning at 5:00 PM. The event hell will help support the shop with the Blue Springs Cop Program, which is a very fine program helping disadvantaged children at Christmas. So if you're a poker player, certainly you're invited to come and do that, and even if you're not a poker player, I'm sure they would accept your money. Next, we have the Blue Springs Community Crime Prevention Office Ribbon Cutting at Lunar Bowl on Thursday, February 27th, at 4:00 PM. So, council, you might note that, to be present for that. The other thing is, as I tried to get Councilman Jeff Quabell to leave, but he ignored me and he stayed, and we want to thank him for being here, he just had a medical procedure done, and his loss in dedication to this council, he came anyway. So thank you, Councilman Quabell, for coming and being with us.
You're welcome, Your Honor.
That brings us to Thutz Tepunda. Now, this person I did not know, I had never heard of until I saw this in my church bulletin, and we'll be celebrating Black History Month program tomorrow evening, and her name is Maggie Lena Walker. Any of you ever heard of Maggie Lena Walker? I knew I, I had not. She was a teacher and the first female bank president to charter a bank in the United States in 1903, and ironically, 1903 was the year my father was born, and if he were alive, he would be 101, 111. So, anyway, she was born in 1864 and died in 1834, so 70 years old, but I wanna share a few quote, and I quote, "No person is your friend who demands your silence or denies your right to grow," end quote. So, anyway, it's always a learning experience for me during the month of February, because I always, I'm able to learn a little bit more about people that made contributions to this great country during Black History Month. That concludes Thuts de Punda. I don't have any visitors' appearance forms, so what I would accept, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign? We adjourn.
How many more meetings here?
Two more.